Live.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Beverly Hills School Board of Education meeting on May 12th. It is now 5:00 PM and we're going to start our meeting with the flag salute. Mrs. Chisholm, will you please lead us in the flag salute today?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Okay. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Margot.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Walker. Is anybody pulling? Nobody, I'm gonna pull consent. Oh, pull number, item nine, I'll just pull it all out.
Mrs. Hacker, I want to pull item 9A1.
9A1, okay.
And I think we're pulling, I think we're pulling 9B, 9B1?
Well, I was gonna pull the entire consent, I know how, what I'm gonna say, if there's something else in 9B1, Mr. Margot, that you want to discuss?
No, if you pull the entire consent calendar, we have to vote on each one individually then.
Well, I was gonna pull it and explain why I was gonna vote against it as a whole, I think it's clear that way.
Right, but then you only need to pull 9B1 for that reason.
No, I already asked, but if you want me to do it, I was told that it's easy to pull it all, and then you can vote, and then you all can vote on it, but Mr. Spitz pulled 9A. So we'll do that, we'll pull 9A and I'll pull 9B, you know what, since we're already doing 9A, it probably makes more sense, I'll just do it that way, I didn't want to tie everybody up, but I will. Okay, let's go, so may I please have a motion to approve the agenda, we'll call everybody out, and we're minus 9B, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Before I vote, can I say something? There was a staff presentation before, do we have the staff presentation first?
We're just approving the agenda.
Right, we're just approving the agenda, Mrs. Marcus.
Oh, well, usually we approve the consent calendar, that's why I'm wondering why this is, just to prove, yes, I approve the agenda.
Thank you, and myself is a yes, and so that's 5-0, okay. So, thank you for that vote, we have to report, Dr. Breggy, do we have a report from close?
Yes, we do, the board has voted 5 to 0 to approve the transfer agreement with Chevron only for Wolfskill 23.
Okay, thank you for that, and we do have a staff presentation.
We have agenda hearing period too, right, public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Margot, I will go to that now, I have with me, I believe it was five letters, so I will read those now. Dear Board Members and Community Leaders, during this pan-mentment, I feel that changing the choir director one more time would create more havoc for the students than necessary. Stacy Kukawa left currently, we have Mr. Turnbull, and now you are replacing him, the students need consistency. I believe the most rational decision would be to allow Mr. Turnbull to stay one more year in our district, and if he's still not a good fit, then create a search for a new teacher, I do understand that there are a lot of different opinions regarding this subject, but to me, this seems like the fairest choice for all parties involved, thank you for your time, Robin Platt. Second letter that I have is, dear Board Members and Community Leaders, we're in the midst of a chaotic time for our children, and it has come to an attention that during this chaos, there is a plan to change the choir director, our concern is that this will create a more unnecessary change for our children who already are dealing with so much. My son will be a senior in the fall, and he, along with all of other students, needs consistency. Your decision to replace our choir director doesn't seem to make any sense to us, we feel that the best choice would be to give Mr. Turnbull one more year in our district, and if he's still not a good fit, then create proper search for a new teacher, now doesn't seem to be the time to make this change. Our hope is to put this in the best interest of our children first, and this would make the most sense to us. Thank you for your time, Beverly Tracy. Third letter. I have the honor of being in the first madrigal group started by Robert Holmes in 1961, the experience changed my life. My daughter was a madrigal under Joel Pressman in the eighties, now in the 21st century, my granddaughter is the first third-generation madrigal singer. Our music program at Beverly Hills School has always considered, was always considered an important, as important as any program in the curriculum. The performing arts flourished and brought great honor to our district, the world is different now, and priorities have changed, nevertheless, the esteemed history of Beverly Hills High School Madrigals has continued for almost 60 years, this is a tradition to cherish and uphold. It is disturbing that the district is rushing to fill this vital position with someone who has previously proven not to be the right fit. To follow in the footsteps of Robert Holmes and Joel Pressman, a nationwide intensive search is owed to the importance of this position. Our kids have gone through so much turmoil during these last few years, why create another situation that is so questionable? The arts are such a vital part of our children's development, before this position is rushed to be filled, the importance of our music program deserves extraordinary effort to find the right person. Respectfully, Diana Gordon. Okay, one, I've got four, two more. Dear Beverly Hills Board of Education, below is an email from my husband that I sent to Mr. Mead back in March in support of Mr. Turnbull. Although our daughter is graduating in a few weeks, we felt it was important to share with you her amazing experience at Beverly Hills High School Choral Program, all four years were wonderful, but in particular, her first semester with Mr. Turnbull was exceptional. We saw her blossom and reach a maturity we had not expected, and it was all because of his direction and support that he gave to her. With the unstable environment these kids have had, I feel it is important to keep him on and give them continued stability and not have them start all over again with someone who is not familiar with who they are or what they have been through this year. Please read our letter below, we will miss Beverly Hills High School and thankful for all that our daughter has achieved, Rachel Scheff. So, there's a letter there, I won't read it, I guess I have to, yes, I'm sorry, I'm gonna read her letter. Hi, Mr. Mead, while we haven't met personally, I did see you at the meeting last week regarding your lean strip, my daughter Rebecca is a senior and in the madrigals theater and dance. I'm sure you are struggling to get all the daily updates and trying to plan for a safe future, and I wish you patience and fortitude. I just felt it was incumbent upon me and our family to add our commenation of Mr. Turnbull after we heard he was not asked to return next year. Regardless of the professional reasons you and the administration have for this decision, I wanted you to know that we are, that we as a family are very thankful that Rebecca's last year of the choir under Michael's leadership, he instilled a great deal of confidence in Rebecca by choosing her to be in the madrigals this year, and her voice and presence blossomed throughout the year as well as we all witnessed. Mr. Turnbull was always so polite and friendly throughout the year, I was even hoping to hire the madrigals for an opening night of the LA Sephardic Film Festival that I chair, but unfortunately, that event was postponed, and I hope to find another event to showcase them when our little world started to fall apart. Please convey our personal gratitude to Michael and thank him for having changed lives in his short tenure at Beverly Hills High School, we will always be thankful for his contribution to Rebecca's special senior year, he has been a wonderful teacher and mentor to Rebecca and gave her the opportunity she deserved to shine on behalf of her school. Wishing you good luck and hoping to greet you in person in the very near future, hopefully at the Chicago performance where Rebecca has a lead part, praying it gets rescheduled best, Neil J. Scheff. So, the final letter, no, I have two more, sorry, two more letters. As a parent of a student in your choral music and theater departments, as well as being Beverly Hills High School Music and Theater alumni myself, I am writing to express my concern over the news of another change in faculty in the choir music department, I was disappointed with the news that Mr. Turnbull would not be returning to Beverly Hills High next year, now I understand that the board is considering replacing him with a teacher that has already once held his position, but was terminated after one year because of being a bad fit with the program, this makes no sense to me. Right now, our kids need consistency, security and encouragement to get them through this seemingly never-ending quarantine, in spite of Mr. Turnbull's release, he has been extremely diligent in keeping the choral students engaged, enthusiastic and singing in order to maintain positivity and creativity as they are stuck in their homes. This to me speaks volumes of Mr. Turnbull's dedication to his students and his craft. Choral music, just like theater, dance, music and other arts, is more than just a class for our students, this is where they build their character and find a place in society of the high school. It was a tough adjustment for the kids to switch from one classroom learning to home learning so abruptly in the middle of the semester, now in the fall, when they hopefully will be returning to classrooms, please don't make them have to go through another transition to another teacher at the same time. I sincerely hope that Mr. Turnbull will be given the opportunity to remain in this position for the upcoming school year 2021, after that, if it is still necessary to search for a replacement, then please wait until a proper and thorough search can be done. Thank you so much for your time this evening, sincerely, Pamela Singer, class of 83. And my final letter to you is, dear Board Members, Dr. Breggy and District Administration, our family has been deeply involved in many aspects and programs at BHUSD School District for decades, having three children matriculate case in 12, we have been through and seen it all, seen a lot. The madrigals program is and has been one of the true gems of Beverly Hills Unified School District, we have admired the passion and strong ties that both alumni and students have to this amazing Beverly Hills High School program. If the performing arts programs are going to continue to be the world-class programs that they are, that anchor our campus, that anchor our campus and attract so many others to our school district, then we must continue to invest in them. We are extremely displeased and disappointed to hear about the hasty hire for the choral position at the high school without a proper search for someone who could be a great fit for the program. Why would you put someone in a position who was already unsuccessful? That decision is a detriment for the kid, detriment, sorry, for the kid. Our performing arts kids have been through so much turmoil over the last several years between staff changes, construction, no performing spaces, and now quarantine, where all their performances, tours and competitions have been canceled. Please take the time and energy necessary to keep this a top performing program at Beverly by going on a thorough and proper search for this esteemed position. Respectfully, Lori and Todd O'Gorman. And that concludes public comments. Okay, so, we now are going to go back to our agenda, and we have a staff report.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Breggy.
Yes, so thank you so much, just to kick this off, I'm so excited to be able to introduce this present briefing, we have talked many times about having the right people, the right plan, and it's the right time, we have such an incredible story to tell here in BHUSD, and the only people that are going to tell it are ourselves, and so it all comes down to some branding and marketing that we talked about in the very beginning, many, many months ago when we started to talk about putting some polish on the district. The branding helps distinguish ourselves from other districts, it helps improve climate and culture, it attracts families, it attracts top educators, and as you can see after the presentation tonight, how this is all coming together, our next steps just fit so nicely with the work that we've done with reconfiguration and also strategic planning, so as I kick this off for Ms. Starkins, who is going to take over the rest of the presentation, I know that you will be extremely impressed with the way that this is all kind of coming together for us, and I'll let her share this very exciting information with you.
Good evening, everybody, could someone please give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? Fantastic, thank you so much. I am so excited and delighted to be presenting these two style guides to you this evening. Firstly, we are starting with the Beverly Hills High School, which is something that people have seen quite a few elements before, and that's why it was attached to the agenda. Our surprise for this evening will be BBMS, it's not something that we have shared yet with anyone other than the principal of BBMS, Mr. Allen, our superintendent, Dr. Breggy, and the wonderful focus group who came together and helped us put this together and make some decisions and give us some guidance, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we move into BBMS later, but first of all, I would like to show you the Beverly Hills High School brand style guide. So this was put together by Hantun and Co., and before I actually came to the district a while ago, they started putting this together, and as all of our board members tonight here know, a few months ago now, it feels like a lifetime during this COVID crisis, we came to you and said there are a couple of adjustments that we wanted to tweak just to ensure that it was as best as it could be, and that we were servicing every student and community member who might have a need for one of these brand elements, and there were a few things that were missing, and so I hope that this really nails it tonight. tonight. So I'm going to go through this, just so that you understand, all of our staff members at the high school and the people who need access to this can request this document, and there's an entire folder that goes with this. And inside the folder are all of the assets, the logos, the marks, in all different formats depending on how people might need them. So feel free to reach out to communications@bhusd.org if you are looking for this document and you don't already have it, but the people who need it should already have it at this point. For our logos and marks, as you've seen before, this is our Norman mascot. We're very excited that he is now going to be such a presence for Beverly Hills High School. I think if you have had a chance to drive past the high school, just before COVID sort of happened, we actually put up a big sign using this logo, actually an extended version which has Beverly Hills High School at the bottom. And you've also seen the incredible lawn signs that our PTSA at the high school have provided for our seniors to celebrate them with graduation with this logo also. So the primary logos are the two main ones, and you'll see one is more of a vertical option and one is more of a horizontal option. And to give you a little bit of background, just very quickly, that is so that if you're in a situation like with our website and you want to have a smaller header at the top of your page, you can have the horizontal option, and if you have some more space, for example, the front cover of a program or a book, you can use that vertical option. Here you'll see a few little adjustments since the last time you might have seen this. You'll see our secondary marks. So we have in the top left-hand corner, the BH Shield. This is an idea that we simplified a little bit. It did used to have a sword down the middle of it. It now has just the BH and our stripes, and this is an element we have actually decided to emulate throughout our entire district. So every single school will have this same shield, but with their initials at the top, so that we can ensure that we're having consistency, but it will be unique because it will involve that school's particular colors, which is something that you'll see when they get to BBMS. At the bottom here, you see our very iconic BHHS, which, as you know, is on the front green of the school, which will hopefully end up a little bit bigger as we move forward with construction. On this page for everybody, it tells you which file they need to use. So most people will be using, as I said, the PNG file, which traditionally you might have heard of JPEG file. A PNG file is the same thing but with translucent background so that you can pop that logo on, and it just takes you through, if I'm making merchandise, which one do I need to use, which file should I use? So Hantun and Co. has put this together. So this is another adjustment that we made a couple of months ago. I really wanted to ensure that our programs, our clubs, all of the people in all of our schools really had a place to put their name. So whether it was an athletic team and it was the volleyball team, or it was a club and it's Science Olympiad, that they had somewhere they could feel proud to know that this is my shield, this is my logo that I can use for my club. And it's a very easy edit for them to make with the file that we've provided, where they can just click on that area that says Science Olympiad and type in the name of their club, and we immediately then have consistency throughout the entire school. So this is something new and very exciting. This is our legacy crest. This is a combination of the old crest that has carried us through for a very long time that was never updated and our new shield for the high school. We have been very mindful to ensure that we are paying respect to what was, but also modernizing it with this redesign of the original logo. And it also includes today Well-Lived, which, as you know, is our high school march show. The improper usage page is arguably one of the most important pages when you're putting out a brand and style guide to a community, because everybody can get really creative and think, well, hold on, how do I use this? And sometimes they'll overlay something over a graphic or an image, they might add things to it, and it's really important that everybody knows this is the best way to use this, and this is how our assets and our logos are going to look as best as possible in all of the different areas that we might use them throughout our community. We then have our brand colors, which are our signature orange, black, gray, and white. You'll see that throughout the other schools for consistency again, so that we're really unifying the district. We continue to use the black, gray, and white colors that the high school had chosen. In terms of fonts and typography, it was really important that, again, we create this consistency. So you'll see that these are the fonts that are selected for the high school, and they're actually going to be the same for every single school and the district itself, which is why it was important that we chose lots of different options for people. So we have Oswald as the main headers font. It's bold and it's very imposing and clear, it's not so cursive, but we have a script option at the bottom there that you can see. Monserat is going to be our main body text font throughout the district. It's a very clean font, which is very clear for people to read, but we wanted to have an athletic option as well, and as you can see there, Alpha Slab is another option for people. Trying to really make note on this page are these little, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, but these little numbers here, which are our minimum sizes. I think sometimes we get very excited to put a lot of information on the page, and it gets hard to read because it's quite small, and so we have included those minimum size suggestions. So that's the end of our high school. Before I move on to the middle school, I think I might pause to take any questions or feedback just about the high school, and then I'll jump right into the middle school and give you a little bit of a summary of that.
Okay, we'll start with, just to be consistent today, we'll just continue with Mr. Margot and Mr. Spitz. We'll start with you at the next board meeting if that's okay. So, Mr. Margot.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for presenting this. I don't want to spend too much time with this. I think in the time of, you know, this started way before the crisis, and it's hard to kind of, hey, let's talk about this right now. It seems a little self-serving, but I know it's something we needed to get done. I appreciate it. I'm wondering, right now, do you have a version of the Norman with a mask on to promote safety and health?
I will take that note back.
Just while we're putting stuff out now. You know, we practice what we preach here. Anyway, but thank you for this, and I'll move along so we can get to other stuff today.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
I just want to mention that I'm very impressed with this work. Very, very professional, and I like it a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Marcus.
I love this. I think we had a great start. This actually gave us a great guide for what it is we were trying to do for the district branding, so I think it was a terrific kind of launch pad. I love the adjusted orange. The only thing I'm going to repeat is what I've said in the past, but I didn't hear support widely for that, but I would love for us to have a lady Norman for our lady teams, our female teams. So I'm just going to stick that out there. I wish I would have enough support to add that to the deck, but I love this. I think it's tremendous work, and again, I think it's really important to reiterate, this started months ago. This first came on our agenda back in November, it came back again in February, so it was well in advance of the COVID pandemic. This work was done and organized. You know, this is really just the first time we're able to share it, that the work is completed, but it began many, many months ago, and I think it's a terrific effort. Thanks so much, Rebecca.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus. Okay, Mrs. Marcus is not with us. You have to unmute yourself, Mrs. Marcus. I can't see her. Dr. Bregge, do you know she's with us? I don't see her. She is, okay. Mrs. Marcus, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm now, yeah, I thought I had muted myself. First of all, it looks very good. I had a chance to see it previously when it was sent to me earlier. I looked at it, and I thought it looked great. It's simple. It doesn't, it's not cluttered, it has a very clean look to it. There's a consistency to it that you feel that the kids can really, it's like they'll remember it, and so that makes me feel good. I just hope that will give the students a sense of something to look forward to when it comes out, because right now, of course, with what's going on in our global world, it isn't very exciting. So I think this will be maybe something that will bring the students together, I hope, and I want to thank the committee for all their work. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any comments. I agree with everything that's been said, so.
Mrs. Hacker?
Yes.
Can we hear from Thomas?
Yes, I was actually just going to ask Rebecca that as soon as I was done, if after Thomas, she can continue, because she still has part two of this presentation, correct, Rebecca?
Yes, I do.
Thomas, please.
Yeah, I really love the updated style guide. It's very clear and comprehensive and easy to maneuver, so that's really awesome, and I'm excited to see the BBMS one.
Okay, Rebecca, please continue. Thank you, Mr. Rukubro.
Thank you so much. So the BBMS one was something that we started with a fantastic focus group. We had eight people, we had our ASB president, we had another student, we had a parent, someone from our office staff at BBMS, an administrator, a teacher, a community member, and someone from our alumni. So it's really important to get the full perspective of different, I think it's the way I would best describe it would be different perspectives and different emphasis of what's important to everybody, whether you're a student at the school now who's experiencing it as BBMS, or whether you went there a few years ago. So that was really great that our Board of Education that you guys picked and selected some of those people, Mr. Allen picked some of those people, and our PTA presidents, and also our ASB teacher. So thank you to all of you for picking a fantastic focus group. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, the process did change slightly, but we did have an opportunity to send out a really thorough survey, which streamlined the process, and then we had a fantastic meeting where we got some really valuable feedback and have made some changes, which they will all see now. So this is our brand style guide for BBMS. As you can see here, this is our new Bulldog, and I will go into further detail on the This is the Bulldog on its own. He stands at the ready. His main job is really twofold, and I say his, but it could be absolutely a her. It's to make sure that the kids are always having fun, but they also feel safe and protected, and that's why his paws are facing inwards. But you'll also know that his tail is pointing upwards, and I don't think you've ever seen a sad dog with a tail that's upwards, and that was to reflect that it was very important to our focus group in their surveys when they said to us, we want him to be playful and not too aggressive, but also to be protective of the kids and of our students. And I feel that this really represents that, and it's delighted me to see what Hantun and Co. have produced here. So the primary logos for BBMS were actually shifted from our first design presentation and then our meeting with the focus group, but the feedback that we got was that it was very important, unlike with the high school where you saw the Norman sitting on top of a stack of texts that said Beverly Hills High School, that it actually represented BBMS. One of the survey responses we had was that BBMS is the school now, and BV was the school then, and it was embracing that this is the middle school, and we are in a new chapter. And so instead of having Beverly Vista Middle School written out, for now, it's really important to us that we emphasize that it's BBMS and that that is what everybody is referring to it now as. You'll see and notice that on the bandana around his neck, he doesn't have the BBMS that was there on the previous screen, and that is because it's important that when he is with that, when the dog, I shouldn't refer to him as a he, I apologize, when the dog is with the BBMS text, it gets very busy to also have it on the bandana. When the Bulldog is standing alone, or if it's just the Bulldog's head with the bandana, you'll see the BBMS there on that bandana. So here again, you can see the vertical and the horizontal options that I described with the high school. Here are secondary marks, so we have lots to choose from in the middle school. We have the full Beverly Vista Middle School one, as you can see, there's no BBMS on the bandana, but then you see the head alone, and there's the BBMS again on that bandana. You see the shield that you'll recognize from the high school, so it's about that consistency coming through. You also have the BBMS standalone at the bottom, which can be used very easily on a cap and in many other situations to signify that this is BBMS, but it's something that we want to emphasize, it would work really, really well on a lot of merchandise, and our PTA already has lots of ideas for how we can use these things. Again, we have the what file do I use page to make it really easy for the users, whether it's, one of our students had incredible feedback in saying, I create posters and things that I need to know, which file do I use? And I said, this will be the exact page for you, because it explains the easiest one for you to create. If you're creating a huge sign or a big poster and you were sending it to the printers, that would be a different file, and we talked through that as well. Again, this is the shield with the section underneath, which is totally interchangeable for all of our clubs and now all of our athletic teams at the middle school, which has been something that really reconfiguration created, and it gave us the opportunity to have all of these different teams, and now they'll be able to have something that's really consistent amongst the teams, but also signifies this is this specific team and this is our name, and we can have that ownership and feel that we can wear that proudly. Again, the improper usage section and our colors. The fonts, as I said previously, are consistent with the high school, they'll be consistent with every school throughout the district. And that brings me to the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you very much for your time, and I'd love to hear your feedback.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Rukubro. We'll start with you again.
Yeah, it's very awesome. I love it. I appreciate the presentation, and thank you to Hantun and Co. and Ms. Starkins and all the other staff members that contribute to this and the focus groups, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the branding for the district, including Hawthorne, Horace Mann the District, and Moreno, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot.
Thank you. Once again, I don't want to spend too much time on this. I really do appreciate this. Beverly Vista has, I felt like, it's had a different mascot and a different dog almost every year. Fellow BV graduate was just contacting me and asking about tradition and stuff, and I said, well, hopefully now we can actually have a tradition, because none of the schools really have had tradition for a long time. It keeps changing and changing. But then again, you know, watching kids in college, it does, you know, that's the nature of branding. Branding does move forward quite a bit. There's room for the traditional part, and then there's room to kind of change things around and redefine yourself on occasion. I think this is good work. Thank you for leading the charge on this.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
I like it. Remember, Beverly Vista Middle School is a new school, and I think that this is a good way to kick it off. I like it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Walker Schuman, please.
As a Bulldog myself, I am so happy to see this. It really makes me happy. I can't wait for all the stuff that goes along with each of one of these style guides that you've presented. I think we're going to see some really amazing things this year from our logo wear and apparel with our PTAs. I give big thanks to Hantun and Company for making such a great product. I'm looking forward to seeing the rest of the presentation for Horace Mann, Hoffa Moreno District, and El Rodeo, because El Rodeo also will have its own branding, but I think this is a fantastic project, and I know the timing is a little weird, as I said before, but I'm really happy that we've been able to bring this to conclusion, particularly at the end of this year, so we have a springboard of time to really plan for and execute well for the fall, all of the different things that this material can be used on, our PE equipment and our uniforms and all of our team support stuff. So I'm very excited. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
Again, kudos to everybody that was involved in all of the branding, and they've done a fantastic job. Now to be congratulated, I would say the same thing about the Beverly Vista that I said for the high school. I think the one thing that impresses me most is that this will tend to bring the kids together, because they can be unified under a really common logo and a common brand. So for that, I think it will create an esprit de corps that the kids will really love. So again, good job. Thank you for all you did, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the branding.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for that presentation, and I don't have any comments. I am pleased with the work so far of the committee, and I look forward, you're going to bring, I'm assuming you're going to come back to us with more in the future?
I will. I'm excited to.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on. See here, we're going to now go to Consent Council. See here, we're going to now go to consent calendar. And so, Mr. Mr. Spitz, I understand that you pulled item 9A. So can we have an I guess we have to vote on 9A and then go into discussion, correct? Or?
We could vote on the rest of the calendar.
Vote now and then we'll pull 9A or do you guys want to?
9A. We wanted 9A and 9B, I was told.
So, Mr. Mr. Spitz, did you want to discuss that now? I know you pulled it.
Yes, I asked that item 9A1 be pulled. That's the minutes of the last regular board meeting. And the reason, the only reason I asked it to be pulled is that I wasn't able in the attachment. What I pulled up was not the minutes. I don't know whether that whether any of you had that same experience, but I was unable to see the minutes that we're voting to approve. Did anybody else have the same problem?
Mr. Spitz, it's Pam. I had a problem today. I don't know what happened, so I I put them both on again today. So I don't quite know what happened, but.
I see. Okay, well, I have not had an opportunity to see the minutes because of that. So so what I will do is I will abstain from voting on the minutes since I didn't see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Margot.
Yeah, so let me, a point of order. I I think we should, one, table those those two approvals so that Mr. Spitz has proper time to review and as do the rest of us. We don't, I don't think we need to take the vote on that today. Dr. Breggy, is that an urgent situation or can we just table those two?
There isn't a there's not a problem with us putting that on the next board meeting as well.
Okay, so let me make a let me make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 9A and 9B.
Actually, I I just can, I thought we were going to vote on 9B. I think that 9A is separate and 9B is completely, I would agree with your your suggestion to pull 9A, but I don't see why we have to pull 9B.
Not, and I was talking about 9A, they're just the minutes.
Right. I I wrote down earlier, somebody said they wanted to discuss something on 9B. So we were going to pull it.
That's a separate item.
So I'm I'm making an approval for the rest of the consent calendar minus items 9A and 9B so that we may table A and discuss B separately.
Okay.
Well, I think we are going to be discussing 9B1 and you're asking us to approve that one and I think that's.
I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm not asking.
It sounded like you were, Mr. Margot.
I'm not. I'm requesting that we approve the rest of the consent calendar minus items 9A and 9B. That's my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard. Thank you.
Okay, so I just just point of clarification. Are we going to discuss 9B, Mr. Margot? I don't see why.
I we discussed it earlier when we approved the agenda. Somebody had said that they wanted to discuss 9B.
That would be me.
Right, so we need so we need to not vote on it now so that we can discuss it. So we bring it up as a separate motion.
Okay, I think we should vote on 9A. I mean, we should, okay, so Mr. Spitz has agreed that he would like he was just going to vote, he was going to abstain on the vote. So you've asked Mr. Breggy, Dr. Breggy, if we can just not vote on the board minutes and bring them back at the next board meeting. I'm in agreement with that. So are we now voting or are we moving on to 9B? I think we have to vote now. Or or I'm sorry, move on to 9B.
Yeah, point of clarification, we need to remove the items that we're doing any other action with from the consent calendar. Mr. Spitz.
Yeah, we should have, we should have discussed, we should have voted and then discussed 9A and 9B.
That's what I'm trying to get us to.
Yeah, that's why, that's the confusion that we discuss 9A. Okay, so let's let's vote.
A question, are you pulling B1 and B2, 9B1 and B2, or just 9B1?
I was requested to pull 9B in its entirety.
9A1. 9A1 was the one that I wanted pulled, 9A1. I I agree with Mr. Margot that we, because we're going to we're pulling that one and we're going to discuss 9B. I agree with Margot that we need to pass a motion on the rest of the of the consent calendar. He has made that motion. I've seconded it and I call for, I call for the vote.
I think we should just not.
I seconded the motion to call for the vote.
Okay, let's go. Mr. Margot, you made the motion. Go.
Yes. I vote yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Walker Schuman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you guys hear that?
Yes, I said yes.
Um. Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that's five zero in favor of the consent minus items 9A and 9B. So we, 9A, we're going to.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to table 9A.
I will second that. I, Mr. Margot, moved by Mr. Margot and I seconded that. And now we're going to move on to 9A. Can I make a, can I have a motion for discussion? Or we can just discuss it?
I don't think it's 9A.
No, well, Mallory, Mallory discussed, but we have to vote on 9A then.
Now we're moving on to 9B.
We have to vote on 9A.
Sorry, you're right. I thought you voted already. That was the, that was the clarification that I was looking for. Okay, so, Mr. Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
This is Walker Schuman.
Yes.
This is Walker Schuman. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Okay, discussion of 9B. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of 9B.
I'll second it. I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, discussion. So I pulled this. I pulled it because I want to go on record that I will be voting against this for, because I I don't agree with line 33 and so I'm opposed to that recommendation. I will not be voting for that. That's it. Anybody else?
Yes. If we're going around. All of the phone calls and emails are not lost on me regarding this issue. I have a son who is an alumni of the magical program, magical program. And the importance of this program itself is not lost on me. And to respond to the community, this was not a hasty hire at all. In fact, this board has spent several hours discussing this one single position. The fact remains, as a colleague recently pointed out to me, is that every program is equally important to us, be it madrigals or seventh grade math or third grade in its entirety. So it is with all of that that I, along with my colleagues, want this program to continue to grow and succeed. Therefore, I would like to ask my colleagues to support me in giving staff direction to find ways and means needed to make sure that this program succeeds under any circumstance. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. Mrs. Hacker, I just want to say that I I agree with Mr. Noah in what he has said. I I support that. I want to see the core program at the high school continue to be as outstanding as it always has been in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something too.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I did. I was wondering if if we could have Luke give us a little description of what it is when we're talking about staffing, that we don't cut staff, we actually cut positions. I'd like for him to weigh in on a little description and and also what the limitations of that are so that people understand when they ask for things like a proper search, that that is not something that we can do within the confines of our collective bargaining agreements for these types of positions. Luke, are you, are you on the call? Can you help us out here?
Sorry, was doing double duty as daddy right now.
I I'm sorry. I didn't, I know I didn't ask you if I had a type, so I apologize for springing this on you. But can you just share with the community that when we were talking about staffing in these types of positions, that we can't just go out and do a search for a for a position that's classified?
No, it's right.
Certified, certified.
Sometimes people actually don't know the totality of why positions are vacant and they don't know the constraints of our collective bargaining agreements that we must abide by with our union. So when positions come open, there are people internally in our district that will have some entitlement rights to those positions which do not make these positions available to somebody, a candidate outside of our district. We obviously go outside of our district when we have a true vacancy, but we always have to start from within our district. And in this case, this is one of those situations where we do have to fill this position from within where people have entitlement to this position.
Thank you. So I also want to echo my colleagues' support for the program. The core program is incredibly important at Beverly Hills High School as it is at at the middle school. We want all of our programs to be successful and I agree with knowing that we should support the program as best that we can. Unfortunately, you know, not always people are going to be happy with some of the staffing changes that they see. But but it is the work of the board to make the decision that's in the best interest of the district and that hits many different things. It hits the student, it hits the program, it hits also financial. So we have to weigh all of those things and I think it's really important that that everyone understands that there is no one factor that makes this decision.
Okay, so we're going to call for the vote.
Wait, wait, wait. Please, can I say something? Thank you. First of all, no one in any more than I can appreciate the musical program at this school. My daughter was in madrigals for three years. Today she's an unbelievable singer. All that started because of her being in this program at the high school. So I, more than anybody, can value this program. And I, she went on to college and and studied music. So for that, I'm not saying that I don't like the, I love this program. Some decisions, I just want you to know, are out of our hands. We don't have the choice sometimes. And I think that unfortunately, and as Mr. Pavone just explained, this is a decision that we were out of, perhaps not able to be in charge of. So we just need to give support, give hand and hope that this program will fly and be as well as all the other marvelous programs that we have at Beverly Hills High School. And I think it will be, if we look positive and maybe take a bigger stand, that it's going to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Marcus, I did not know that you wanted to speak to this. That's why I was going to jump on the vote. Okay, ready? We're going to start with Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Yes.
Walker Schuman. Not hearing you, Walker. Uh, Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and my vote is a no.
Mrs. Hacker?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, Dr. Breggy, that you are clear because it seems like there's support for the direction to find ways to augment and support the program to make make adjustments as needed and bring it back to the board as needed to make sure that the choir program at the high school gets the attention it deserves.
Sure. I I want to make it very clear that part of our responsibility is to look at the, all of our programs, including this one, to to ensure that, you know, it remains a viable place to be for kids and for staff. I mean, this is a flagship position like so many others. But but absolutely, that's part of our responsibility to, you know, to to maintain the the growth in the departments and to excel and to provide support. And I think that that's, whether it's in administration or whether it's in with teaching or with some of our classified staff, it's our job to help provide that support. And we're happy to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Dr. Breggy. Okay, so we are moving on to reports. We have a, Mr. Margot, you have a quarterly report from Laxta.
I do, sorry. Okay, so on on Friday, May 1st, the Laxa board met and presented their 2020, 2021 slate and discussed current challenges and disconnects with remote learning and discussed graduations. This county superintendent, Dr. Eduardo, stated that she was very impressed overall with how her county superintendents, ours being one of them, have been handling the closing of schools and switching to home learning in the limited time and resources that a lot of schools have. We are very fortunate in our district to have one-to-one, which has helped us in some respects with the home learning. She stressed that communication on all fronts is a key issue during these times, that there is a constant focus on food distribution in most districts. Some districts also have no PPE, you know, protective equipment for continuing food service. It's been hard for them to come by it. The pandemic has also shown a true imbalance with students in regards to connectivity and access to technology. And as we discussed, best practices, she strongly recommends that districts, from this point on, try to network more and do not go at it alone. A lot of us were on a phone call the other day with the state superintendent, Tony Thurman, and Representative Ted Liu about issues plaguing his, the school districts in his region. So we are getting ideas. I'm listening and I'm sure Dr. Breggy is to other superintendents and their thoughts about home learning, about reopening and safety of our kids. She also mentioned that the Greater Los Angeles Ed Foundation is a nonprofit that's now funded up to $2 million that's looking to support gaps in technology, among other issues. Of big importance is that the county office, the finance office, is predicting possibly a negative 2% COLA in the on's coming years because of this pandemic. And I'm sure Mr. Roach will circle back to that at some point with budget discussion. She advocated switching to funding for most schools based on enrollment and not attendance. Not an issue for us as basic aid, but an issue nonetheless throughout the county. There's a reopening team. I think there's several reopening teams that are focusing on safety with conversations around testing, PPE and contact tracing. The the public health, county public health, Dr. Barbara Ferrer, is still discouraging any mass graduations of any type at all during the summer. No gatherings of anything. And they're they're recommending conservative planning for next year's budget. Something I found interesting is that they said there's been less child abuse cases now due to the fact that teachers are not in contact with their students on a regular basis. Teachers and school admin are the first line when it comes to making a lot of those reports. So there's a decrease in child abuse, which not necessarily is a good thing because they're concerned about not being able to investigate homes that may have issues. And of course, they they stress that mental health for all stakeholders, students, teachers, staff, parents, admin, is going to be very sensitive coming up. When we talk about reopening and getting kids back into school, we really have to pay attention to what that's going to look like for the long run and taking care of our students and that mental capacity. So all of a sudden, our counselors and psychologists are going to play a much bigger role than they ever have when we reopen the school. So that's my summation of the of the meeting this time. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer, but those are just from my notes.
Thank you, Noah, for that update and thank you for representing the district at Laxta. Let's see, Mr. Spitz, any questions? Anybody, any questions? You can signal to me, raise your hand, I'll call on you. Mr. Rucubro? Nope. Okay, no questions. And Noah, I just do have a question for you. In your conversations, I know you mentioned some of the, you know, the impacts of COVID-19. I'm assuming. I'm assuming, well, three of us were, or four of us yesterday, I know we're part of this town hall meeting with Mr. Ted Lieu, and it seems like there's a lot of ideas and thoughts and action actually happening around renters and landlords, but nothing concretely yet as far as guidelines for educators as to what's going on in the fall. From your conversations with Laxta, has that group put any pressure? Are they asking for guidelines? Or what's your opinion as it relates to any conceptual guidelines for us to follow in the fall? Has that been a discussion? Or there's no?
Yeah, the brief discussion, and everybody prefaces the discussion by saying, we don't know what will happen yet. That's the big mantra. But what I'm hearing from most of the people who attended that meeting was, we are not, there's an anticipation to want to open with the true understanding that so many elements have to be properly in place that are really, right now, are impossible to put in place. I know that Superintendent Chernus from Palos Verdes was very vocal in a recent article, and he was vocal again during the meeting yesterday about the consumable cost of PPE, of bringing people back into a school, what that would look like and how much that would cost, and who's going to pay for that? That's not a budget line item, is burning through consumable PPE stuff on a daily basis. So that's a big issue, is just the cost itself of reopening. And of course, then there's the fact that there's no vaccine. There won't be a vaccine in the fall. It might be tested, but it won't be released. And that the liability and indemnification issues haven't really been totally vetted because the things are done from the public, the county public health office sets the guidelines, and school districts can do more than those guidelines, but they can't do less. So we don't even have guidelines yet from public health. So all of the talk is premature, and that's why, kind of in all of these conversations we've all had, Dr. Bregge's shaking his head, he knows, nobody knows. That's the real truth, is that nobody knows. So what school districts can do is they can decide to be proactive, they can decide to be conservative about it, and just maintain a home learning program until there's better knowledge about how you even do a blended, how you put people back on a campus. Because it's just not as easy of saying, oh yeah, we can put five people in a classroom once a day. It's just, there's so many parameters that they haven't worked out. So I look forward to what the county comes up with, with their little task force and their, and they'll report. I know, Dr. Bregge, you meet with the county all the time, so you'll bring us stuff back faster than the, this, our board, our representatives will get it.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Yes, I think you're right. I think the overlying message here is that there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of ideas, but everyone's kind of waiting for some guidelines so that we can build more consensus around what plans are in place. And then I know the staff has been talking and working, and they're waiting, and it's just as eager as we are to find out what exactly will prevail. I see Mrs. Walker Schuman. Thank you again, Noah, and I'll now defer to Ms. Walker Schuman.
It was a great call yesterday, and I just wanted to add a couple of things. There was also the concern about the cost of sanitization versus the regular custodial cleaning that we have usually, and the cost, where that cost is going to be offset. And so when we're talking about funding and what we're going to be relying on from the state and federal government, that was part of the conversation. But the real emphasis, at least my takeaway of the real emphasis of that whole conversation, was local control, that we are not going to be able to depend on Sacramento, on the government, on the governor or the superintendent to mandate remote learning, to mandate anything that really impacts our collective bargaining agreement, that we're going to have to really set the tone for what it is we want in our community. So I think a lot of that work has to start. I mean, I know it has started already. I think that we need to really focus on that now. I think we really need to determine what it is that we're comfortable with and forcing across the board. And those are the conversations I'm looking to have now about the options of what the fall is going to look like, option A, B, C. And I'm really anxious for that. I know it's super time consuming. I know you guys have been working really, really hard, but I'd really love to hear an update of when it is that we're going to be listening to those different options, because it's really going to fall on us as the local leaders to make the decisions about how far above and beyond the guideline recommendations of public health officials we're going to go.
And I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Okay, so thank you again, Mr. Margot. We're going to leave this topic of discussion and move on to item under Report 10B. And Mr. Blake is going to join us, or he might be already with us, and he's going to lead this discussion. Mr. Blake? You need to unmute yourself, Mr. Blake.
Actually, on this one, Terry's going to do the presentation for the PowerPoint.
All right, I just put the PowerPoint up on the screen. Can you guys see it? Can you guys see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can see it, it's very small, I can't read it.
Oh. Let's see. Don, are you going to speak, or should I?
You're good on this one, Terry, for the record on this one.
So we saw the article in the Weekly, and we felt that it was important, especially given some of the circumstances that have occurred recently, to give an update to the board and to the public so that folks know exactly what it is that's going on. So what has happened is Metro, in planning for the subway tunnel, did some testing underneath the school district site. They did something called magnetic resonance testing, which involves sending some pipes underneath the site and testing using basically electromagnetic to see if there's anything down there. While there were testing, the Metro folks discovered two anomalies that happened to be old abandoned oil wells that we originally believed were in other locations. What we found was Rodeo 107 is an old abandoned oil well that we originally believed was somewhere else on our site. It happens to be in the line of where it is that Metro's BR line is, which is the right side of their tunnel. So I've just put up a slide showing the approximate location of Rodeo 107 that has been located through both the electromagnetic work as well as through digging and excavation. This well was originally drilled in 1909. It is 2,903 feet. There was no surveyed location, but there was a suspicion that it was in a large, kind of trapezoidal area that encompassed everything from the tennis courts all the way under Building B1, leading over to the maintenance trailer. This well is noted as suspended, which means it had never been abandoned before previously. So it's right smack in the middle of the location where the Metro line is. So this well is under what's called Calgem jurisdiction. In the past, there was something called Dogger, which is the Department of Oil, Gas, and Natural Resources. It's now been renamed Calgem. They are the oversight authority for all oil wells. A second oil well was also located, which was Wolf's Kill 23. It's underneath one of the portables, which if you go down there now, it has been removed. The way that the district actually came to know that these anomalies existed was both from a report that was provided to the school district by Metro, but also when Metro was doing their drilling, they used something called drilling mud, which is kind of a gray, almost like a lubricant-type substance. It started coming out of the ground, which helped identify exactly where the oil wells were. So Wolf's Kill 23 was the other well that was located. It was drilled in 1908, redrilled in 1911, and abandoned to old standards, which are no longer applicable, but abandoned to standards in 1916. That well is 2,715 feet deep, redrilled to 2,745 feet, and it was plugged in 1916. There are some issues with the well. They're not really relevant for us, but relevant for Metro's analysis and for Calgem's analysis. But these two show the location of the Wolf's Kill well. This is a drawing that we received from Metro. This drawing shows the exact locations of where anomalies are. There were three anomalies total. The Wolf's Kill is known as Survey Location A. You'll see that where it's located with reference to the tunnel. The B location is the location of Rodeo 107. The C location is what's believed to be a water well. In the record, in the old records, we were able to determine that there was a water well that was associated with Wolf's Kill 23. It goes about, we believe it goes about 90 feet down into the ground for water purposes, and they're doing excavation to try to locate anomaly C right now. In our discussions with MTA, MTA said that they have done everything as far as they possibly could with regard to planning and taking feasibility measures to avoid impacting the high school. Their number one priority is district safety, and that's why Don has been watching over this project also, to make sure that everything is done as safely and as thoughtfully as possible. The parties have agreed that Metro will not tunnel through Rodeo 107 or Wolf's Kill 23 without Calgem's previous approval. So Calgem has to weigh in before any tunneling can occur, and an approval has to be received. Metro's goal is to ensure no disruption to the school when it resumes, and they're working closely with the school district with regards to Calgem to ensure a safe abandonment. Metro has also agreed to pay for all abandonment costs, testing and engineering, for the abandonment. The current status, we thought that it would be helpful to clear up. One of the things that was said in the Weekly article was that there was oil coming up from these old historic wells. There was no oil. The only thing that was coming up was some drilling mud because of the testing activities. The district has been working to, with MTA, to abandon these wells, and that's why occasionally you'll see items on the agenda where the district is putting projects forward so that the abandonment can occur. MTA has executed an agreement to reimburse costs incurred for the engineering. There is another agreement that will be on the next, I think it's either the next board meeting or the board meeting after that, where we're going to go over the reimbursements for the construction. So right now, we have both an engineering agreement that's already been executed, an investigation agreement that's already been executed, where all costs are being reimbursed, and a subsequent one for the contractor, ARB, that is in process. We are currently engineering, and we are working with Metro in order to do that engineering. We have a very competent and knowledgeable specialist in oil well abandements that we're working with, and they are designing the abandonment as we speak. It's expected that the abandonment operation will start in June and should be done before the start of school. And that is everything that I have for the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tao, for that presentation. Don, did you want to include or say anything here? You're good, before I take it around to the board for discussion.
No, I'm good. I think that was a clear reset on the status and subject, both legal and operational.
Thank you so much for that clarification. I think it was an important one to have in public and to explain, you know, what the situation on the ground. So I appreciate both of you being on this call. So let's see, we'll turn it over to Mr. Rupro. Do you have any questions? Mr. Rupro is not with us anymore? Okay, Mr. Margot?
Yeah, well, I see Thomas. I just, do you still want to talk, Thomas?
Hi.
No? Okay, he's shaking his head. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. I always love clarification. I would encourage anybody from the community to feel free to ask questions. Don't speculate on any of this, it's happening in real time. Send board members or admin questions regarding this ongoing project. I would also like, if possible, Mr. Blake, your department maybe will come in a month and give updates as needed so that the community can understand the process going forward.
We'll be loading this presentation on the facility's website, where we have located all the reports on the oil well operations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spitz?
I have no questions. Good presentation, thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Nothing for me. Thank you for the presentation.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes, just one quick comment. I'm glad that this presentation was so clear, so understanding, and I hope that if people in the community will now see the real picture, and there will be no misconceptions about the two oil wells and what they mean and where they are, and I'm very grateful for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you again, gentlemen, for being with us tonight and for clarifying, you know, again, the situation with the oil wells.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. We're going to move on with our agenda, and we're going to now go to item 10C, Superintendent's report. Dr. Bregge?
Great. Okay, hopefully you can see my screen. Just want to give you a brief overview of where we are tonight in a couple of different areas, including security and where we are just kind of with our everyday, what's happening with our facilities, our programs, just all of our spaces on our campuses, as well as what was just talked about a little bit. We've been involved in a lot of discussions. It's always great to see when our board members are able to jump in on some of our webinars with our local officials and also our regulatory agencies, just to get an idea of where we're going as a system within just Lakos and also within the state. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about security, because as more and more people seem to be out and about, and some businesses are starting to reopen under some of the plans within the state and also within LA County, we do have security that's on campus. And I just want you to know, we've been adjusting. Mr. Lovelace, in this department, has been adjusting the needs between our NASDAQ security and our CSEA security, based on the needs of what is happening in the district. And a lot of that, of course, is centered around what's happening with our Home Learning Plan 2.0, where we are now. We do have security that's happening morning, afternoon, and evening. It's all week. Our campuses still remain to be very active places, even though they're closed. We still are a place where we are attractive to people that seem to be looking for a place to go. I'm not going to post any pictures for fear of somebody recognizing somebody, but I want to say thank you to our CSEA employees and our NASDAQ employees, our frontline employees, who have been very integral in securing our conditions. And we're doing a little bit different, again, adjusting to some of the needs that we have in the district. So our security program has changed a little bit, and there's certainly more movement that's happening. And there is more of a rotation basis that's happening so that we're using a lot of our CSEA employees in the morning and afternoon and then our NASDAQ employees in the evening. We get daily reports on incidents that are happening at our schools, outside of our schools. And there's a lot that's happening when they're doing security with the perimeter. But they're also on the move too because our facilities are closed. So they're also looking for, you know, if anything's happening inside the school too, we have to protect our own property. If there's a pipe that burst or something that's happened inside that we continuously have some movement inside of all of our properties. And we're looking for just anybody that's not supposed to be there or something that just isn't right. It's important that we have eyes on everything. And as I mentioned, we have daily reports that come in and you'd be surprised at the number of things that are found and resolutions are put forth right away. So there's a lot of activity and we're very pleased with what's happening. But we feel very confident that our property is secured. With our continued conditions with the COVID-19, we, as you know, we've talked about many times that we are following many of our regulatory agencies, the CDC, of course, and also Laco. Public health is such an important part for us. So our facilities are, in essence, physically closed. We are experiencing food service delivery out of our Horace Mann location. We do, we've used Horace Mann. We seem to have that down routine for when we do need to have parents pick things up. We've been using Horace Mann as a facility where we have our security there as well as we've just got a good system with the police department when we are asking for parents to come pick things up, as well as some of that food service delivery that I just mentioned. The JPA programs, their programs that are on our sites still remain closed. We do get a lot of calls from people in the community that are asking about when they're going to open up and when will some programs be allowed to run. And I just want to give an update to everybody that Mr. Ellis and I meet on a regular basis. We're in constant communication with the city. And as we follow the information that's coming in from public health about what's happening in our community, we are working with our JPA partners very closely. And, you know, when and if those programs are going to be opening up, whether it's an outside program, we will let people know when that is. We are not taking it for granted that we're just going to remain closed for a set amount of time. We are very flexible and we are in constant communication about what's happening around us so that when and if the time comes that we'll be in good stead and we will have some planning and we'll have some communication about when programs begin to open up. And that brings me to something that was just talked about with some of our discussions that we're having. And this is the, you know, this is the information people are waiting for. But I want people to know kind of just where we are right now. We're in a much different place now than when we were, you know, when COVID-19 first came about. This is a completely different situation. We have a little bit of time on our hands to get this right. We know that we're working with the CDC and Laco and the LA County Department of Public Health. And what they've asked us to do is to come up with options for the beginning of the school year. And so we are working on that right now. And so, and I know that the frustrating thing for people is that they want to know exactly what's going to happen in the fall. And we're not in a position right now to say exactly what's going to happen. But we are doing a lot of things right now in preparation. So it'll be much different from the first go around when we had our home learning plan and our home learning plan 2.0. We feel that we have a much better sense now and a little bit more timing to get the input that we need to come up with a hybrid of options. So some of the things that the state is telling us to do is to come up with this hybrid of options so that when August is here and we're ready to make, we're ready to go back to school, that we have in place various plans that we can say that this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to implement it and be confident about what our plans are. This is going to look a little different than what we've had in the past. It's going to look a little different at the elementary level versus the middle school level versus the high school level. And that's what we're working on right now. We are planning on the social distancing restrictions still being in place. Just today, we received word that this should be continuing through the month of July, the safer at home strategies. And so while that's going to be in place, from what we know, we have to take that into consideration as well that when the plans are to release people back to work and back to school, that it's very likely that social distancing restrictions will still be in place. There, at this time, there's no signs of any large group gatherings that are going to be happening at all this summer or even into the fall. They're not even giving us any guidelines at all when any large gatherings will be possible for our schools. We talked a little bit about the PPE, the personal protective equipment, the masks for students. And it was brought up earlier about costs and things like that. There are a lot of options out there. There are a lot of options out there that are washable options, that are options that students can have and they can keep and they can take home. And they don't have to be the type of masks that are happening with some of our hospitals. So we're working on what those next steps, I'm working with Mr. Haas on what that could possibly be. I'm also reaching out to our PTAs this week to find out if, you know, this is something that they can partner with us on. There's just a lot of options out there for these types of masks. If there's other recommendations for PPE materials, we continue to get information from the county about what that might look like. If there are those, you know, these stands, the plexiglass stands that are in front of people for certain barriers, we're looking to see what that may look like as well. At this point, they're saying with people, with parents looking at taking temperatures of some of our students, there's been some discussion about, you know, staff doing that. But right now, the direction that we're getting is that, you know, parents can certainly take temperatures of students. That's something that we would hope would happen and then to keep them home if they have their temperatures. But it's also, we have to be very careful because it's still the asymptomatic person that seems to be of what the danger is as far as passing on the virus. So we have to be vigilant to the social distancing restrictions and the masks because of those people that are asymptomatic. So what we've done is, and working with Mr. Seaman and teachers that have been successful with our learning plan, our home learning plan 2.0, to create options so that we have options that we can share with the board. We would like to present these to the board, some of the options on the 26th, which is our next scheduled meeting in two weeks. And we'll have a robust conversation about different options so that when that time comes that we're ready to make a very good decision on what's best for our students. The one thing we do know is that what we're doing now is really not something that is something that we can continue for the long term. And we have to consider not only our students and their education, but also our educators as well and the actual material and how that's being delivered. So we have a lot of information that we're looking at. We're talking with experts in their field, within their grade levels. And so we are excited to be able to provide a variety of options to the board at our next meeting so that we can start to look at what that hybrid approach is. There is no one size fits all. I do want to point out something that was just shared recently. And this is an important point. Mrs. Walker Schuman had said this and Mr. Margot alluded to this as well, that the, there are no mandates that are coming from the state when it comes to you have to do this or you have to do that, which is, it's great to have that type of flexibility, but that means that it will look different in many different school districts. So we are worried about our own kids and our own instruction. And that's actually a plus that we are not going to be told that we, the option that we come up with has to be the exact same as another school district. So for that freedom and that local control, we're very lucky that we have that. And I think the most important thing and one of the hardest challenges that we have, and I'll end with this, is that we have to be able to come up with an option so that we're ready to then transition back into what we would consider to be a, you know, a traditional setting. Because at some point, we're going to move back into a classroom setting with all of our kids. I don't know when that will be, but it's going to be important that whatever option this is that we get from this group of people that are looking at the options that we will share is that it has to be transferable. It has to be, it has to be something that is, we're able to be successful with and then move it in a natural way into, back into a setting to where there's some normalcy back into our world again. And it's a tall order. This is not easy. But the exciting thing is that we have this ability to do this and to do it right and to do it with the right people who are helping to put together this plan. So that's kind of where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we will certainly have some more detailed information for you at the next board meeting on the 26th.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Bregy. We'll take it. Mr. Recupero, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bregy, for the presentation. I'm glad that staff is working on something that the board has kind of, you know, directed to look at three options and coming back, not coming back, or a hybrid. You know, we have a policy in the district about seventh graders and the TDAP test, you know, tuberculosis, tetaria, all those things. And we make sure that our students have that shot before they're allowed to come into seventh grade. That's still correct. That's still the case. So it's really interesting to me that all of these, this brain trust of people in the state, county level are discussing reopening without the existence of a vaccine. And it baffles me how people have these conversations as if somehow we're going to be, we could do what we want and we'll work around the vaccine until there's a vaccine. I don't understand it. Anything less than a vaccine is going to put people's health at risk. And it's very hard to sit here as a board member and say, yeah, 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 that's great. We can go back in a modified version. Because there's no way we're going to be able to control what every student does at every point of the day. We can't guarantee that. We really have to be smart about this. And I have to preface it by saying it's absolutely horrendous. It's horrendous that we're in this position. I don't like it. But what I don't like even more is people winding up on a ventilator because we had to do something faster than we should have. I just read and I texted Dr. Bregy, CSU, Cal State University, is going to stay online for the fall. They just announced it. They're staying online for the fall. UCs will fall in line behind that and we will watch how colleges all start doing that and districts start doing that. Because if you really are paying attention to the science of this, they don't know yet what they don't know. So for them to assume anything, you know, there's been discussions, are children carriers? Well, there was a five-year-old casualty in New York from the disease. It's not, it's not, I mean, I want to be ready to go back. I want there to be hope. I want there to be enough availability of hospital beds and treatment facilities and staff that if it does spike again, we can handle it, we can deal with it. But I don't want to put anybody in harm's way. So I want to continue down the path you're doing, Dr. Bregy. I think it's great staff is looking at options. But I remain hopefully pragmatic about this and just are expecting people will do so as well so they're not disappointed in the fall when it's told to us by the county health department, you know, you better stay away from each other a little longer because they've just extended it to July and they're going to extend it again because the situation hasn't changed. That's why it's going to keep getting extended. Unless something happens between now and July, which they're saying we're months to years away from it, how do we think it's going to all of a sudden turn around in July? It's preposterous. Anyway, thank you very much.
No, and thank you for your comments. And I think that one of the things, you know, and I'm not an alarmist in any means, but it's, we have to be ready for, we can't be caught like we were before where we have to throw something together. We need something that's going to be robust enough that even if we were to come back and if something happened, that we can rely on what we've done so that we can then transit. We can't keep doing this to kids and we can't keep doing this to staff. So your comments are well taken because I feel like, like we can't, we can't just prepare for that there is an end. Like we're not sure when that's going to be. We have to prepare for that we could be back in session, but then back out again. And it isn't fair to our kids to do anything less than to prepare, to over-prepare with a very robust delivery of instruction for anything that could happen in the future.
Okay, Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I, Dr. Bregy, I appreciated your presentation. And I'm very, very happy to hear and to learn that there's going to be a certain amount of local control here. I want everybody who's watching this meeting to know that our Board of Education has yet to meet and discuss this issue of what, how we are going to deliver education to our students in the fall. That has not come about. I'm looking forward to this meeting in two weeks. I hope that this meeting will be a meeting in which individuals, board members, will be able to discuss their own viewpoints on this and their own, make their own suggestions, that it will be, that it will be an open meeting and certainly not limited to some options that will be presented to us. I'm looking forward to that very much. I don't think that this is, this right now is the time for any of us to present our own viewpoints, but I am very much looking forward to that next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I'm in agreement with Dr. Bregy and Mr. Margot. And I'm really also with Mr. Spitz, although I will go back to the meeting that we had on April 28th in our communication from the board. We did, I at least feel like we discussed, because it was on the agenda, summer enrichment and assessment opportunities, discussion of fall plans, option to return to school with social distancing measures and equitable turnkey remote education for every student in grade level. So I think we've all been thinking about it. I'm sure we've all heard a lot from our community members. I know the staff has been working on it quite significantly. But we haven't had a presentation yet with recommendations from the staff as to what it is they think that this would look like or what the different options are. So just to make that distinction, Mr. Spitz, I agree with you that we haven't all really discussed it robustly before because we haven't had a presentation, but we have had some discussions of it. I think we have to be really careful because there's things that we're talking about here. Some measures that are really already policyed. It is policy in this district not to send your kid to school with a fever. And yet people do it all the time. And maybe now they'll pay more attention to it because this is a highly infectious respiratory disease. But, you know, yes, it's going to be on the parents. And, you know, that means it's incumbent upon us to talk about contingency plans for when we have a kid that's sent to school with a fever because the parent hasn't taken the temperature or, you know, whatever reason. What does that look like? How do we respond? Do they go to the nurse? Is there a containment, you know, room where we have each fact that, you know, that kid isn't going to be exposed to the rest of the population there? There are so many things that we need to consider. And I just, I want the public to know that that's why it takes so much time. That it's not really the type of thing that we can all just sit in a room and spitball ideas. It really has to be properly planned. It has to be procedural. It has to be, you know, a very structured, organized environment so that we really can end up with a solid plan instead of just a bunch of ideas thrown up against the wall. So I thank you, Dr. Bregy, for bringing this up. I actually didn't know that this was in your presentation today and I'm sorry. I actually didn't know that this was in your presentation today, and I I'm sorry, I jumped the gun a little on that one. I wouldn't have said anything if I'd known that was coming. But I thank you for your presentation. This is this this is and should be our first priority until we really get it sorted out. And then as we have new information coming in from public health, I agree with you with all of the changes, you know, and all of the new information that we're getting, the idea that a vaccine is still pretty far out, even if testing is more available, you know, we cannot be too careful. And we really have to make sure that the offerings and the options that we come up with for the fall are, for lack of a better word, bulletproof. We need to be able to give our kids more than what they've got right now. And we have the good fortune of time on our side at this point. We're early enough that we can have these conversations, that we can, you know, vet the plan and have these discussions with our teachers' union to make sure that we're really all on the same page for a successful fall launch. And just to bring a little bit of levity, I'd really like to see branded masks now, rock star branding for high school and B V M S at least right now, and I'm sure the other schools to follow. I want to see branded masks on these kids' faces if that's what what it's going to look like coming back in the fall. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Marcus, you need to unmute yourself. I'm not sure if you are. Okay. I cannot hear Mrs. Marcus. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I cannot hear Ms. Marcus. So I don't know if it's me or Ms. Marcus. Okay, so I will take it on, and when she comes on, we'll defer to her. Okay, so I just want to clarify something that, you know, I heard Mr. Spitz, I heard Mrs. Walker Schuman. And so, Dr. Breggy, I do recall that when those items were brought to the board, your position was that you were still gathering and collecting information and that you were still assessing the information and that it wasn't something that you, you know, this discussion was not, you know, what we're going to do in the fall was not a discussion that you and your staff were not looking forward to having, it's just that you were still assessing information. Is that not correct?
Yes, the the difference this time is that we instead of reacting to an emergency, that that we're we're actually getting input from teachers that are successful in the home learning plan. So, yes, so that we we feel like this will be a much more robust, this will be, you know, that we're getting input from from our experts.
Got it. So so, yes, that's a very important point. I want I'm so glad that you touched on that. I know you said at the last board meeting that you were, as I said, gathering information and having this discussion with our stakeholders. And so can you tell us how, you know, what are what are teachers sharing with you at this point, if anything, as far as what their concerns are, you know, where, you know, what what positive stories have they shared or things that they'd like to see? And if you feel that this is premature, I would respect that, and we can definitely have that conversation in two weeks. But for the purposes of the board, I just think it's it's very fair to say that we haven't had that robust conversation where, you know, we've had a presentation, as Mr. Spitz has said, where we have an opportunity to engage and give you feedback because at the end of the day, you know, we set policy, you all manage the schools, and of course, we have oversight over that. But we haven't we haven't had that discussion collectively as a board. And so I'm I'm so pleased to hear that you're going to be coming back to us in two weeks with that information. But I just just it's a conversation out there. My question, it's really important for me, as I think most board members have stated, that the teachers be a very strong force in this conversation because they are, at the end of the day, you know, a critical component of what does happen. And so, you know, I'd like to hear from them, and I know that you're collecting their input. So are you ready to give us any, you know, feeling or gauge as to what so far you've compiled or not yet?
No, I would say it's preliminary right now. I'd rather provide you with a more comprehensive approach. You know, meetings have just started, so but but I I have every confidence that that we we share the same thing. We want to make sure that we have a long-term, robust solution to to what's happening. And so we have the right people at the right table and creative people. And so I really look forward to to the next meeting to start talking about what what next year could look like.
And I just want to say for for those watching that information, you know, we have information today, but that can very well change in the next few days before our discussion on in two weeks. So as as I we've we've said so many times, we've said information is fluid, we continue to analyze and communicate that information that comes from the state, from the CDC, from Liko. So, you know, we, anything can happen. So, you know, and and so I thank staff for keeping tabs on this. Mrs. Marcus, I see you're here, you're ready to speak. Could you please unmute yourself? And I will give you the floor.
I'm sorry I had to leave. I had an emergency. I want to thank you, Dr. Breggy, for that very important presentation today and to catch us up on where we are. And I think most of the members of the board have really reported in. I did I missed I wanted to ask one thing, and I think that's what I heard Ms. Hacker talking about when I came back in, and that was about the teacher's input into the process. And I I think that's what I heard her talking about. Is that correct, Ms. Hacker? Were you talking about the teachers and that?
And Dr. Breggy says he's still collecting it, and he's going to be sharing that with us or putting that that will be part of his presentation, right, Dr. Breggy?
That's correct.
Great. Okay, so that would be the only thing that I wanted to make sure was that that was I had that in my notes to mention that. And unfortunately, I had to step away for a second. So thank you for filling me in on that. And I look, as I say, it's such a fluid situation, and I just worry about it all the way. And especially, you know, we do have some teachers in our system that are older, and we have to worry about them too because that could be a situation that might be something we have to look at. I don't know who they are. I don't have that information. But I know that we have many teachers that, well, maybe they've already, many of them retired, but and there are many teachers in our district who have some issues health-wise that could make them very much. So we have to be very aware of those also. So that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
If I could jump back in with one more addition?
Sure.
In addition to getting feedback from the teachers in terms of their experience and what what they need to feel supported and to be able to better execute online learning, I would love to have feedback from the parents since the parents are the ones over the last, you know, six, eight weeks that are trying to figure out how to actually homeschool their kids while while we're all kind of stuck in this situation. I would love to have some kind of survey with feedback from the parents as to what it is that they also need, assuming that this is going to continue for some period of time, so that we can better serve the needs of the of the parents and frankly, the students. I think, you know, we've talked in the past about doing a survey. I know it was more about morale, but it may be a good idea to do that at the end of this, you know, remote learning, home learning plan 2.0 situation so that we can really get good feedback to figure out how to move forward in the fall.
Yep, agree.
Okay. So, Dr. Breggy, we look forward to having that presentation from you all. And then from, I guess, the board should be open to listening and hearing, and then we can make recommendations at that point and weigh in.
Yep.
Okay. So thank you so much again. We're going to move on with item 10D, Board Member Thomas Recupero. Your your report, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a two quick announcements and kind of reports. The whole district last week celebrated our teachers. It was awesome. We had a virtual video from the high school and the middle school had a video online on their Instagram account. And if you didn't have a chance to participate in it, it's not too late. You could send a thank you email to any of your teachers, and they would greatly appreciate that. Online APs also started yesterday and will continue on until next Friday. So good luck to everyone taking those.
Thank you, Mr. Recupero. Okay, we're going to move on to human resources. Let's see here, resolution.
I'll make a resolution, Mrs. Hacker, or motion?
Yes, and I will let me let me, can you please read the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019202029 to reduce or discontinue particular kinds of service.
I will second that. I will second that. And we will call it for a roll call vote. Mr. Margot? I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Well, was there any?
Right, we're going to call for a roll call vote. Any discussion first, though? No. Okay. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
I missed that, Mr. Margot. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
This is Walker Schuman.
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus. Thank you. And I'm a yes as well. Thank you for that. It's 5-0. Vote carries and we're going to.
I move approval of adoption of resolution number. I move adoption of resolution number 20192020028, approving amendment number six to the construction services agreement with Pro West.
Point of order. Wait, we we missed an item.
Yeah, we missed an item. We're in business and finance. We're in section 12 of the agenda. So I will make a motion. Okay, I will make a motion. It happens, you see? It happens. It's very confusing sometimes. So I will make a motion on section 12A, information only, Los Angeles County Office of Education. This is just actually not a motion, it's just just information. Wade, did you want to jump in? Is Wade with us? He is with us.
Yes, thank you, President. This letter from the County Office of Education is just a certification of our second interim report we presented in March. Just as a note for the community, if you look at the second interim report now, there's a section called multi-year projections. You can pretty much throw that in the trash because this was pre-COVID, pre-economic disaster. So all of those numbers are going to be changing or changing right now. So the county did confer with our positive certification, and that's a great thing. But we're working on changing all these numbers as we speak.
Thank you for pointing that out, Wade. That's a very important piece of this. So thank you to recognize. Okay, so we're going to now move on. This is Walker Schuman. Did you want to now make your motion?
Yes, I will move adoption of resolution number 20192020028, approving amendment number six to the construction services agreement with Pro West, PCM, Inc., DBA Pro West Constructors for Beverly Hills High School Buildings B1 and B2 Modernization Project, establishing a preliminary guaranteed maximum price for phase three of the modernization of Buildings B3 and B4.
I will second that. Thank you for that. Any discussion? Mr. Margot?
No, I'm just I'm glad that the projects at least are moving along at a nice pace.
I agree. Okay, anybody else? I don't see anybody else. We're going to go for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus, can you give a thumbs up? Here's something. Don't hear you. Thank you. And I'm a yes, the vote carries 5-0. Moving on to section, do I have a?
I move the rejection of the bids for bid number 19-20-004, the Beverly Hills High School Building A refurbishments and exterior asphalt work project.
I'll second.
Thank you. So duly noted, Mr. Margot, second that. And any discussion, please?
What what is the timeframe on this to get, are we well well within the timeframe to get new bids on this?
Yes, we're in the timeframe to to rebid it and get new new bids. It's tight, but we're comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay, Mr. Blake, can you? It's okay, can you mute yourself? Thank you. We're going to go for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Spitz?
Yes.
Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, the vote carries 5-0. Thank you for being with us, Mr. Blake. And we are now going to move on to communication from board members. Mr. Margot?
Thank you, Mrs. Hacker. I'll just keep it brief. I just wanted to say that as we're wrapping up the year, coming to a close, I hope that I think Mrs. Walker Schuman mentioned earlier, but I hope that parents and students reach out to us about their experiences with home learning, both both positive and negative, because I think it will help staff as we start to define what next year looks like, take some other things into consideration. And I know sometimes people say, well, you know, the district doesn't care what what parents say. We really do care what everybody says. We 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 listen and we do the best we can, given the constraints that we have being a public institution. So I do want people to continue to speak to us, and and I know I get phone calls about what's going on. But to put it down on paper and let the let the superintendent and staff and principals know, you know, hey, we had a good week, we had it, we had it, we could, our week could be better, please let us know because we can't adapt and change unless we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
I agree with Mr. Margot. No other comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I agree with Mr. Margot and Mr. Spitz. I also want to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. Last week, I've seen some really wonderful and heartfelt things that kids have shared, that parents have shared with all of our our staff. And and, you know, now that they're all in this 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 position that we're all in, being at home and trying to work and manage family and everything else, it's a really difficult thing to do. And so I just want to share appreciation for our teachers, even for our parents who now have become teachers, even though that that wasn't their planned career path. We appreciate all of you doing such a fine job to try and support our students at such a difficult time. I wanted to wish our the the students taking their AP tests this week, good luck. I've heard that there have been some challenges. I know it's incredibly nerve-wracking and like everything else right now, it's unprecedented unprecedented time, so we'll see, you know, how everything works out. But good luck. I know you guys have all worked really hard up to this point. And that's about it. Thanks to everyone for tuning in.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes, I would just like to comment on the Bulldogs, whatever you call that, maybe magazine that they put out monthly, the person in charge of that issue from the Bulldogs is it that that's an incredible thing that comes out every Sunday night. I I look forward to it, and I'm not even a parent. But I have to tell you, I this last week it came out, and there were examples of students' work, something that they did in English. It was mind-boggling about the boy who goes from being a dumbbell, you know, idiot, to being a brilliant kid. What was the name of the book again? I can't, somebody quick chime in and tell me. I can't, somebody. Anyway, it was the most incredible assignment by the English. It was an honors class. It was.
It was probably Flowers for Algernon.
Flowers for Algernon. Thank you very much, Mr. Margot. I really and also that arts display of the artwork that Mr. Listko's class had. I need to tell you, I went through those pieces, and there was a hundred and over a hundred pieces that were just amazing, different, different ways of doing art, different, there was clay, there was paint, there was woodworking, there was photography, everything. And it was a marvelous presentation. So I really was glad that that was presented, and I think that the community should we really be proud of the work that the kids at the school are doing.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Mr. Recupero, who has an announcement. Mr. Recupero?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say for all seniors to get in their roll call video. It's a really awesome video graduation that we're going to have, and you really don't want to miss out on being a part of it. I've had a quick glimpse of it, and it's really awesome, and you really don't want to miss out. So please take my word and submit your roll call video. And good luck on APs.
Thank you, Mr. Recupero, and good luck to you as well. Okay, so some of you already beat me to the punch, so I want to say congratulations to our teachers and happy related Teacher Appreciation Week. We did meet last week, and so we missed that mark as far as acknowledging you. But I want to say that the board very much acknowledges, you know, how important of a stakeholder you are for our district, and you are key to the success of this district. So we recognize you and your roles that you play. And so thank you for all that you do for our students.
Okay, so some of you already beat me to the punch, so I want to say congratulations to our teachers and happy related Teacher Appreciation Week. We did meet last week and so we missed that mark as far as acknowledging you, but I want to say that the board very much acknowledges, you know, how important of a stakeholder you are for our district and you are key to the success of this district. So we recognize you and your roles that you play. And so thank you for all that you do for our students. Along those lines, I want to also echo the sentiments of Mr. Margot. And for the board, actually, I just want to say that the board, you know, we, I think everyone in the board cares about this district and the success of this district. And everyone on the board really takes the rules seriously, no more than any other. And, you know, collectively, we want what's best for your children, our children, and again, for the success of this district. And, you know, we have a role to play, a role that's called, you know, that has a lot to do with governance and oversight. And management has a role to play, having to do with the administration of and how we move this district along as well, as far as the organization. So I just really want to say thank you to everyone. I know these are very difficult times to the parents, to our students watching. And, you know, we're going to, you know, I know it's cliche, but we will get through this together. And, you know, I'm looking forward to having more robust discussions. There is no right way or a wrong way. There's just like going to be one way we're going to get through this time. So, Dr. Bregy, Dustin, and, you know, I know that, I can't imagine what it's like to walk in your shoes. You're not walking to work these days, but can't imagine what it's like to be you all in these days. But I know that you take the work that we want serious and you want the best outcomes as well. So just want to really say that we appreciate what you all do as well. And we'll get through this. May 19th, we have a study session. Wade, is that correct for the budget? Is Wade not with us anymore?
No, that is correct.
Okay. And so what I think would be helpful in that presentation is to tell us, you know, what changes are going to be impacting the budget next year, if you know from any commitments that have changed. I think this would be a time to let the board know so that we are working with that information as we start to make decisions and start to shape our budget for the next year, the next three years. So that would be very helpful. I would make that request now. And let's see here, yes. I also want to echo and give a shout out to Mr. Lisco. I want to echo the sentiments that Mrs. Marcus has already shared. I thought that the art gallery was a very amazing production from our students and so I thank him for leading that effort and for demonstrating the good work that is being done at Beverly Vista. So with that, I would like to say thank you to all of you for being participants of this meeting and I look forward to the 19th and to seeing you in two weeks. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.